Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Bi-Weekly Report, with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments, and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings, and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well. Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. The meeting will be starting shortly. While we wait, let's learn more about Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show, or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU16 and can be found on channel 13, with all your school sports, events, and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV, and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content.
Good evening, Exeter, and welcome to the February 13, 2023 Select Board Meeting. The time is a little after 6:30. Posted Agenda Time for this evening. We're going to commence with three board interviews downstairs in the Wheelwright Room, at which point we will return for regular meeting. Thank you.
We're live.
Let's just wait for them to get back. Looks like we're live.
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay.
Nancy might want to mute.
Nancy, once I introduce the board, um, oh, you've done it. Thanks. No. I don't think so.
Do we know the, um, terms for those positions?
I have them.
I have them.
The full time is 4:23, the alternate is 4:24. Yeah. Excuse me. Yes. Yes. And then the other one has no term. Hi. Good evening. Okay, so as the time is seven o'clock, we call the Town of Exeter Select Board meeting back to order. Good evening, Exeter. Good evening to my colleagues on the board, respective town staff and those in attendance this evening, and good evening to those watching from home. This is the February 13th, 2023 Town of Exeter Select Board meeting, and I'd like to start by introducing the board. To my right, Select Woman Lovey Roundtree Olaf. Good evening.
Good evening.
Vice Chair, Select Woman Molly Cowan.
Hi, everyone.
Clerk, Select Woman Julie Gilman. Good evening.
Hello, good evening.
And we have Select Woman Nancy Belanger, who has joined us via Zoom. Good evening, Select Woman Belanger.
Good evening, everyone. I'm not able to attend tonight, and I am in person, rather, and I am alone in the room.
Our Town Manager, Mr. Rustine. Good evening.
Good evening.
Assistant Town Manager in attendance, Melissa Roy. Good evening.
Good evening.
And our Recording Secretary, Joanna Bartel. Good evening. My name is Nico Papakostandis. To start, open it up for public comment. This is an opportunity for the public to weigh in with any comment. Since we have no public this evening, we'll move right on to... Mr. Dean, do we have the swearing in?
I think that is deferred.
That is deferred?
Deferred.
Okay. To...
Next meeting.
Got it.
At that point, we will look at the approval of our regular meeting minutes of January 30th, 2023. I'd ask the board first if there are any amendments or revisions. And seeing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the Town of Exeter Select Board
regular meeting minutes of January 30th, 2023.
Some of them.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all votes this evening will be via roll call. Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. And Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes. And we have three appointments to consider this evening as a result of the board interviews earlier. We have a vacancy on the zoning board with a term to expire April 2023 for a permanent voting member.
And Mr. Chair, I would like to appoint Teresa Page to that position, a full voting member for the term to end April 2023.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. And Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes. And lastly, we have an opening on the Human Services Funding Committee. There is no term. We interviewed Catherine Ryder this evening.
And Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Catherine Ryder to the...
Human Services Funding.
Human Services Funding Committee for the unexpiring term.
Second.
So motion and a second by Select Woman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. And Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes. And we have a vacancy on the zoning board for approvals for an alternate member with a term expiring April 2024.
And Mr. Chair, I would move to appoint Laura Montano to the alternate position on the ZBA for a term to expire April 2024.
Second.
There's a motion and a second by Select Woman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye. And Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes. And lastly, we have an opening on the Human Services Funding Committee. There is no term. We interviewed Catherine Ryder this evening.
And Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Catherine Ryder to the...
Human Services Funding.
Human Services Funding Committee for the unexpiring term.
Second.
So motion and a second by Select Woman Belanger. Any discussion? Seeing none. Madam Clerk.
Select Woman Belanger.
Aye.
Select Woman Roundtree Olaf.
Aye.
Select Woman Cowan.
Aye.
And Clerk says aye. And Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes. I want to thank all three volunteers and welcome them to their respective boards. And Mr. Dean, you'll follow up with them later this week, correct?
Yes.
Great. Jump right into our discussion items. First, we have our Fire Chief Eric Wilken here this evening to discuss update on Fire Department EMS fees. Good evening, Chief Wilken.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, Town Management Board. I did send a memo to the Town Manager this past week looking to have a discussion about fees in general. I know Pam had sent out a request to all the departments to update their fees, and in doing so, we kind of looked at the ambulance rates and said that we hadn't adjusted them since actually 2021. And the last time we had a discussion from department to board was 2013, when the board approved a formula that allowed us to bill or set the rates at the established Medicare rates established by CMS, the Center for Medicare Services, plus a 30% administrative fee, whatever you want to call it, above and beyond that. We've used that since 2013, and you're aware of the revenue that pays for all of the components to deliver ambulance service, the ambulance itself, all of our supplies, fuel, repairs, and all overtime associated with the ambulance service, whether it be maintaining licensure and their certification, or overtime to backfill when we're on medical calls. So all of that is borne by the ambulance billing itself. We entered into a quick discussion over the past month with Comstar. Comstar is the independent third party that we've used for at least the past six or seven years. I know prior to that, we had another company that did it. And the principles that Comstar advised and provided, and in your packet you see a lot of that, advised myself and Sister Chi Pizon on some best practices and some established rates throughout not only New Hampshire but New England. Just to paraphrase, a summary for sake of those at home or the viewers, that Comstar bills for thousands of municipalities and private ambulance services throughout New England and the northern portion of this country. Exeter, our rates are at the bottom of almost every single category. Comstar was successful recently in negotiating with the state of Maine Legislature and setting a rate statewide for all ambulance services at the established CMS rate, plus 100%. And that rate has been in effect now for about a year, and all of us, the communities in Maine, are billing at that rate. Moving on down the list, it shows that our ambulance service peaked last year, an all-time high for the Town of Exeter at 2,342 requests for the ambulance. Of those, we transported 1,571. And I think you'll see, when all the books are finalized, that the revenue generated by the ambulance in 2022 far exceeded our expectations because we did kind of guess or forecast on the low side, the conservative side. But with that, some of the breakdown that's interesting, and I guess it shouldn't be a surprise that due to the demographics of the town we protect, we are an aging community. 60% of our patient billing is for Medicare services, so about 70% of our calls go to those that rely on Medicare as their primary insurance. At least 30% or about 500 calls are billed to insurance companies like Anthem, Blue Cross, Cigna, Matthew Thorne, just to name a few, not to single out any, but just to name a few. What I'm proposing in the rates, and we can discuss it further, looking at some of the graphs that I gave you earlier, is we are proposing to move from the model of Medicare plus 30% to what Comstar recommends, and many communities in New Hampshire and Maine have gone to, is Medicare plus 100%. If we do that, we will realize approximately a $40,000 to $44,000 increase in revenue just by Medicare alone. So the CMS, the Center for Medicare Services, did not raise rates in 2020 due to COVID. If you remember, they gave us a one-time stipend in lieu of perceived losses. And Doreen, when she was here, and then Cory kind of picked it up. We were able to demonstrate losses that year in the neighborhood of $50,000 plus, which allowed us to keep those funds from the Center of Medicare Services. So they looked at '21, and in '22, they raised the rate. So as we're moving into '23, the rates have increased, probably the largest single rate increase I've seen in Medicare in the 18 years that I've been in the fire department. But it's primarily due to inflation and the cost associated with delivering service, fuel, ambulances, and staffing. In addition to Medicare, the potential exists by changing the billing structure of an additional 100, perhaps on the high side even close to 110, 112, of additional revenue from the private insurance companies like Blue Cross and Cigna. We currently have a contract with Blue Cross, Blue Shield in New Hampshire. We agree that they all pay 80% of our billed rate. For that, they send us monthly checks, monthly invoicing that they get billed from Comstar, no questions asked. Some towns argue, and there are towns adjacent to Exeter, that have chosen to not go with a contract through Blue Cross of New Hampshire. The game you play there, or the problem with that, is they can choose to reimburse the patient directly, and then the Town of Exeter has to seek reimbursement from the patient, which is far more difficult once the patient receives the check than it is to just take the 80%. So there's a balance from what we do. Having said that, the only company we do have a contract with is Anthem. So every other private insurer that a Town of Exeter resident uses, or somebody passing through Exeter has, and the unfortunate event of a motor vehicle accident or any other issue, we get 100% of what we bill from those insurance companies. So that's where that extra $100,000, $112,000 could be realized. So if you add the two together, potential revenue for 2023 could be in the area of $150,000 in addition to what we saw this year, assuming all numbers remain the same. We're looking at a snapshot at times. I just used '22 as data. You see all of the forms again. We're just looking at, the last paragraph speaks of our relationship to all the other clients that Comstar uses. The Town of Exeter change form, I included in your packet, just so you can get an idea graphically of what we would be recommending. That form has not been submitted yet until we had this discussion tonight, but I wanted it in your packet so that you'd be able to see what we're doing. Comstar bills on our behalf for different levels of service. We only bill at the basic life support service, if that's what the patient requires. Support to the hospital, sometimes it's non-emergent. We don't need to run lights and sirens to that patient. Other times, it is considered an ALS or Advanced Life Support Call. And Advanced Life Support 1 and 2 are how they represent the levels of care given. ALS 2 could be a full cardiac emergency with defibrillation, intravenous fluids, drug intervention, medication intervention. ALS 1 would be at a lesser degree. Specialty care transport is often used when we are asked to move a patient from one hospital to another hospital, and that is very rare. We try not to get into that business. The private ambulances maintain it, but a good number would be about once a month. We are asked to assist the Exeter hospital in transporting an emergent patient to a more definitive care facility, and so we have the ability to bill for that or capture that. And then mileage itself. We're allowed to bill Medicare and others at a loaded mile for every mile, and you can imagine, Exeter, we're blessed with a community hospital in our own town. Sometimes our mileage is very small. It's two miles, three miles. Other times, if we transport to ports with regional, it's a significant travel distance and the mileage is greater. So that is what Comstar will be looking at us to supply, and if you agreed with my recommendation of moving to a model of Medicare plus 100, that's what those rates would look like there. Without boring everyone, I would just entertain questions on the... Um, without boring everyone, I, I would just entertain questions on the, more of the graphics that went along, um, and, and see if, where the discussion would want to move us.
Okay, great. Thank you, Chief. Questions for Chief Wilken?
Yeah, my first question is, can you explain to the listeners what Medicare plus 100% means?
What it means is Medicare sets a rate based on the regional ambulance services there. Currently, um, the Medicare rate is somewhere, the reimbursement rate is somewhere in the vicinity of $440 for an advanced life support call. So we could bill $1,000. We can bill $10,000. Medicare has agreed by contract to only reimburse the town of Exeter $440. So, and that's the amount of money that we would receive from Medicare on behalf of any patient we transport. If that patient had supplemental insurance purchased through, uh, any number of, of, of sources, they would perhaps pick up the balance of what Medicare didn't pay, and that's what the town of Exeter would receive for, for a reimbursement for an ambulance service for that Medicare patient. So when Medicare sets the rate, it's just, for some reason, it's the buyer we all use. It's the buyer the industry uses to move all the rates from.
So Medicare pays a piece, and then your supplemental insurance pays the rest?
Correct.
So it's not like somebody's not getting their Medicare because they're paying 100%?
That is correct. You are absolutely correct.
Just wanted to be clear, cause somebody asked me what that question meant, and I didn't, I thought I understood the, uh, the numbers, but I just wanted them to be sure.
Any other questions?
I don't think so.
Nope. Selectwoman Belanger?
Yeah, just a follow-up on that, if I, if I may. What if they don't have supplemental insurance? Does that mean that the, the person with Medicare has to come up with the other amount?
Um, often that happens, we, uh, thank you for that question. We have several, uh, patients that will transport each year that have no insurance. So let's go all the way to the worst-case scenario. Um, and what we do in those instances is we ask Comstar, our billing agent, to send out two bills. We'll send out a, a bill for service, requesting our fee, which would be whatever the number is, Medicare plus 100% in this case. Uh, if that patient did not pay in a timely manner, Meda, uh, Comstar would send out a second reminder bill for that service. If we did not receive money after that second bill, we would be notified and a decision would be made at the town level whether or not there were circumstances that the patient could not pay, or whether we should pursue, um, payment options like, as, as worst-case scenario, collections for that, for that service. But 99.9% of the time, I think, you know, we have a great track record with our patients here in town that we transport. One bill goes out, reminder bill goes out, and we take what the Medicare or the insurance company would provide.
Thank you. Any other questions? Selectwoman Belanger?
Um, yes, thank you. Just one more. Uh, in our revolving fund, is, how, what shape is that in right now?
I don't have those numbers, but would, could I defer to you, or would Cory be better for that?
Yeah, well, the, the revolving fund's been turning back. Uh, it's a roughly, give or take, a $500,000 fund. And so it's, it's fairly healthy right now.
Okay. Do you remember the, the, the division, whether 5% annually is set aside and the rest is, is, I don't remember that, that...
Yes, 95% of the fund balance from the ambulance revolving fund is turned back to the general fund to help pay for EMT salaries.
Okay. So the fund grows at 5% a year. So obviously, the better we do in the fund, the more stays within that fund. And that's when, it's just great examples. We used that twice last year. We came to kinda out of cycle and said we really need to purchase some airlifting bags. Uh, rough, I think that was $19,000, $20,000. Those funds came from the ambulance revolving accounts, so there were no taxpayer dollars for that case, and I don't remember what the other, maybe it was a hammatral rescue tool, but I know there were two times a week. So the fund's been very helpful to us in maintaining the level of equipment and service.
Okay. Anything else? So, Mr. Dean, we're looking for a motion this evening, um, to authorize the town of Exeter Fire Department, I'm just talking this through with you, I'm not making the motion, So we're looking to move authorizing the fire department to update the ambulance transportation rates to Medicare plus 100%. Is that correct?
Correct.
And Chief, is, do we need to authorize anybody to sign this?
No, because it's the billing rate that you, that, once you set that in motion, we'll use that formula until we we visit you again, and, uh, we, we'll decide to change it one way or the other.
And when would you like this effective?
Tonight would be fine.
Okay. Uh, then I would entertain a motion to authorize the Exeter Fire Department to update the ambulance transportation rates to Medicare plus 100% effective February 13th, 2023.
So moved.
Second.
It's motion is second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger?
Okay, next on our agenda, we have an update, uh, from our interim Public Works Director Paul Velasic, also town engineer, on the Squam Scott River Siphons Project, and I think he also has some guests with him he'll introduce. Good evening.
Good, good evening. Paul Velasic, town engineer, interim public works director. And with me tonight, uh, I, we have some engineers from the Bright Pierce, who's been with us for the entire project. Uh, we have Michael Terrio and Kevin Garvey. And any type of technical questions, we might have to get them up here to, uh, explain things. Now, in your packet, there was a memo from the town manager, and I'm gonna speak about that memo and then, and try to give my own interpretation of what is going on, uh, here as, uh, an update. Uh, but I'd like to start in some of the earlier times, uh, and, and walk through for the uh, people listening at home that might not be aware of the siphon project. And, and I'll be very brief with this, too. Uh, back in FY20, there was a town warrant to, um, uh, construct and design a siphon barrel to go from across the Squam Scott River uh, in the vicinity of Clemson Pond, or the JD Hillside, or the, uh, Exeter Mills, to go across the river and flow to Swayze Parkway, where we've got the, uh, main pump station, uh, for the town. The flows that go through that pipe are just under an average of about a half a million gallons a day. And there are two existing siphons, and siphons are a way to go through a dip without having a pump station that adds energy and moves the, uh, effluent, uh, to the other side. And it's very similar to if you were to siphon gasoline from one vehicle to another. It's the same, uh, idea. So there's, there's two siphon pipes. They're, uh, eight-inch, I think they're ducted on, yes, uh, from about the 1960s. And one of the tasks that we had when we were designing up this extra siphon and was to clean and inspect our two existing, uh, siphons. And the, the reason that we wanted to do an additional barrel to begin with is because they've reached their capacity, uh, flow-wise. And any growth in the, um, Portsmouth Avenue, uh, side of town, uh, at least in the outer edges, uh, any, any other, uh, developments in the JD Hill, uh, type of area, uh, would, and, and Holland Way, would, um, not potentially be allowed because we didn't have enough capacity for it. So with this project, uh, back in FY20, uh, there was also a little bit of funds to get started with an upgrade of the Webster Pump Station, which also, uh, pumps to this siphon area. So, um, the company that we had, uh, tried to clean the existing siphons, and they were having trouble eliminating the water. And when they put some cameras in there, there was, uh, holes in the pipe. So what went from a project of, uh, how can we increase capacity through the siphon area? Now was how can we save, number one, uh, these two siphons from, uh, um, getting any worse, or how do we fix this situation, uh, let alone how do we build extra capacity? And after, uh, additional, uh, study, uh, different types of options, and, and also the complexity of trying to, uh, fix the existing siphons without any type of relief, uh, there was a decision now to, now we will, uh, construct three new siphon barrels to replace the two that were deficient, and the extra one for the extra capacity. And any type of siphons, uh, designed nowadays will have three barrels anyhow, so, uh, th- this just brought us more in compliance. So, uh, in FY22, there was not a town warrant for additional monies to construct these three siphon barrels. Uh, what there was, was, uh, congressionally, uh, directed spending by, uh, Mr. Pappas. Uh, there was, uh, state ARPA funds, and there was also town ARPA funds that were pointed towards what the estimated cost of the three, uh, siphon barrels were. So now we go out to bid after the, um, design, and, and, and the preferred alternative was to directionally drill underneath the river, uh, these three barrels, and it was supposed to be a fairly, uh, quick operation. And, and with that, there was, um, and this is important for later discussions, there was a couple of extra boreings that were put there. One on the mill side where a, uh, uh, the siphon would start, and then there was another boring over on the Swayze Parkway side where the siphons would come up, uh, to see for any type of ledge profile, and also it would be important information for uh, any subcontractor that does directionally drill to know the conditions of the, of the soil. Uh, there, there was also, um, other deep boreings, uh, from other projects. Uh, there, there was the, um, main pump station project that just happened a few years ago. There was some, uh, work down at the PEA, um, boathouse. And we also had data from the, uh, existing siphons when that was constructed or designed in, uh, in the 60s that had boreings right in the river, uh, uh, for the construction of those siphons. So we've, uh, we did not find any ledge where our, uh, profile would be, but it was good information for to, like I said, the, the subcontractor that does directional drilling would have to know those, um, soil conditions. So, went out to bid. Bids came back for the construction portion of, uh, $1.63 million, and and there's also the construction engineering part, uh, for $274,000. Uh, so the contractor mobilized, and this was, uh, right before Christmas. Uh, they delivered the pipes, and you can see the pipes were all fused together. Uh, they're laying out there at, uh, Swayze Parkway now. They are, um, two, uh, 10-inch pipes, and these are polyethylene pipes. They're fused together, and, uh, there is a, uh, 12-inch pipe there, also polyethylene. So they start drilling right before Christmas, and there was the assumption that it was going to take about five days, uh, to install one of these barrels. And the method for, uh, doing this, and I use the, the layman's terms the way that I understand it, uh, there was, uh, a, um, a jacking pit on the mill side of the river, and they would put this, uh, uh, this drilling head, uh, down at an angle, get about 20 feet underneath the bottom of the river, level out, and then come up on the Swayze Parkway side. And once they got through the other side, then they would put a, another head on it that would widen the hole and attach the, um, the polyethylene pipe through it, and then pull it all the way back underneath the river up to the, uh, the mill side of the river. And, and that was expected to take about five days to do that. Well, right after starting with the initial drill, uh, they got about 80 feet out, and they hit something. And so they relocated a little bit in a, uh, where, where another pipe was, uh, gonna be installed. And they start drilling again on, on a different day. And, uh, they hit something in the same general vicinity within 15, 20 feet of the last time, so it was presumed to be, uh, a ledge outcropping that, uh, uh, was a surprise to us. So, work was halted, and there were some discussions, uh, with the contractor on how to proceed. And my, my little method of how we would install the pipe now is not going to work for, if you, if you have ledge. The idea is if you have ledge, this bit that they were using to slice through the soil substrata, um, that they thought they were gonna go through, uh, cannot make it through, through rock. So it had to come in, uh, with a, a rock bit that would be able to grind a hole, and I think they, they started with maybe a six-inch, maybe six and a half. The size doesn't matter right at the moment. Uh, and, and what they'll have to do is, is drill from one, one side of the river all the way through ledge, and then up the other side, and that's only gonna give you a small hole. But now that you've got the pipe all the way through, you needed an extra drill rig. Now you need two. One on each side of the river, because when you bring that back towards, uh, the other, the, the original side, you've got to enlarge the hole. And once you get to the other side, you gotta repeat it again. So, and now you've gotta add even a bigger, uh, size, and goes through, so there's will be three passes through any type of ledge, uh, to make a hole wide enough, uh, to pull the pipe through. Um, the... And at the time, uh, that, that we discovered this situation and how to keep the project moving, uh, we said, "Right now, we are only going to authorize you to," this is to the contractor, "to authorize to do one barrel for now, because this is differing conditions than, uh, what was bid on." And now there is a time and materials of, uh, uh, a situation that we've got to be aware of. Um, and the differing conditions, uh, letter was given, um, uh, right before New Year's. And so the, and, and that gave the contractor the go-ahead to, uh, now start mobilizing with um, additional equipment, uh, and, uh, rock drilling equipment. Now, when I say that time and materials, there is, uh, um, to, to cost for mobilization of the drill rigs, and also a reclamer. And this reclamer actually takes out the, uh, the rock pieces as it's being drilled. And while they're drilling, too, they, they put this, like, slippery clay type of, uh, material called bentonite uh, into the hole also to help to lubricate, uh, the operation. Um, we would be on the hook for lost time because of the failed drill, um, and any operations beyond the original five-day, uh, estimate that the, uh, contractor was using. And what, what also happens when you have these, uh, rock, uh, drills, the drill bits wear out, too, so you'll have to be replacing, um, uh, bits. So now, the contractor relocated, cause there was better access from the Swayze Parkway side, and started to drill from, uh, right near the, uh, the main sewer pump station off of the road of Swayze Parkway. And as they're drilling down, you, you get to the elevation that they were supposed to get to, and now they're supposed to level out and go underneath the river, while with the to, and now they're supposed to level out and go underneath the river, well with the weight of the rock drilling head now, they could not change directions as efficiently as they could, and end up hitting the ledge that we knew was eventually there. So they were deeper. So now they're starting to drill into the rock. They get in, and there's a situation where they got to change the size of the head. They pulled it back out, and one of the situations that we learned very quickly is that when you change the head and you try to go and put it into the same hole where you started, there's not a great chance that you're going to find that exact hole because of the soft soils that it was drilling through to get there. There's not a conduit already for the drill bit to follow through. So when they hit the ledge, it's basically drilling a brand-new hole to start off with. Where they're at right now, there's been situations where they had to start over, and it's their fifth attempt on the Swayze Parkway side. There was two attempts prior on the Mill Street, I mean on the Mill Building side of the river. So as of today, well, as of at the end of last week, they were finally halfway across the river with a drill, and it's the furthest that we've been since the project has started with this current one. There is an anticipation by the subcontractor, the directional drilling company, that that bit will probably wear out before it finishes on the mill side of it. So what we've done last week is to authorize the contractor to install a conductor barrel. And what a conductor barrel is, is another pipe that they can put over the drill as it's already in the ledge, and put that down to where it hits the ledge, and it's almost like a straw that if you pull the drilling head out of that straw, now you're guaranteed to be able to hit that hole, change the drill head once again, and then continue on down to where you left off. So we authorized that. Now, the daily costs for this operation are not insignificant, and we are just last week getting a real flavor now that there is, with the construction activities that are taking place, that it's pretty expensive per day to be drilling through this ledge. The production over the last week or so, or the last couple of weeks, only averages about 50 feet a day. And right now, we've got 500 feet across the river, and we've got another 300 to go as of today. So that will only get us through with that first directional drill, the pilot hole. And again, we're going to have to change the head with now two drill rigs and come back again. And the subcontractor thinks or suggests that it's probably going to be the same drill rate to come back to. It's not going to be any faster than it is to get across with the pilot hole. What is good about this, now that we'll have a connection to the drill from two ends, we will not lose the hole any longer, and it'll be a back ream, and then again, one more through before the pipe can be pulled through. So as I was saying that the costs are significant on a daily basis, and the production is fairly slow, that we're going to have to evaluate how we want to move forward with this project. It's not necessarily a financial given that we can afford to do this for three barrels. We're trying to explore what that all means, and we're not quite there yet. And I think the town manager's memo mentions something like that, but we're trying to get our hands around it on what our next options may be. One of the other activities that was also authorized last week too, was to try another technology that seems like it's going to be okay for providing the town and the consultants some additional information. And it deals with seismic monitoring, and you know, I kind of watched some of those shows on TV where they looking for oil or looking for water out in someplace, and they got these seismic sensors in the ground, and they ping the place, and there's a readout of what they can expect to find under the ground. And we'd like to, we are going to do that, to find or to map in 3D the contours of any ledge that is out there. And as I suggested, we got to look at options because the costs are growing, maybe new routes or information on some of the existing pathways will present itself with that seismic monitoring.
That do okay?
That's a very thorough explanation. I think we probably all have some questions, and I think some of my questions are more for the town manager, but one I can ask you, when you talk about exploring other options or delays, I recall back when this project was first brought before the board back in December of '20. It was a, not an emergency situation, but a dire situation that really needed to be dealt with, with some immediacy for this neighborhood. So I guess the most important question I'll probably ask tonight is, is the delay or the stop, or another option, whatever it is that you all come up with, is that going to negatively affect this neighborhood? Or what's our timeline? And I know you can't predict, you know, it could go tomorrow, I understand that, but with all of your expertise, I mean, how immediate does this need to get done for this neighborhood?
Yes, it's going to need to get done. It's the same urgency that we were in front of you in '21, I think it was, right before that. What we did since that time was develop a contingency plan. This was even before this project got started. When I say this project, this design was put out, we had a contingency plan. And the contingency plan deals with, okay, the existing siphons failed, you can't use them anymore. Here you've got a half million gallons of sewage, what are you going to do with it? And the solution for that, our contingency plan, was that we could get some sort of pumping situation, very similar to when there was a major collapse right on High Street by Portsmouth Avenue a few years ago, where we had to pump around that one. A pump situation could be installed in the manhole that is over on the mill side next to Clemson Pond. We can use the pipes up to a certain level as the wet well which accumulates the effluent before the pumps turn on, and then pump it someplace. The root or the force main of where it would be pumped would be along the Mill property, heading upstream towards Stringbridge Road, cross Stringbridge, and then tie into a manhole, a sewer manhole in the corner of Water Street and Stringbridge Road. So that would have been the contingency plan to do that. If we get at least the one barrel installed, there is your force main or your relief valve if you put in a pumping situation in the manhole next to Clemson Pond, that is the avenue that we could get the effluent over to the main pumping station on the Swayze Parkway side. So that is the contingency plan, and right now, we don't have that barrel installed. And that's why we're still working towards that. We can breathe a little bit easier effluent-wise with that installed.
Okay. I'm going to yield on my other questions for now. Any questions down here?
My brain's just kind of reeling from the technology aspect of how to get to the pipe and get the, you know, when you take it out and put on a new drill bit, trying to find the hole again, I know that's not my field. But the drawing that was given to us shows the profile, and I just had a question about, because it's so tiny for us to see, what all the colors mean. I'm not clear on the information you're trying to give. Well, I just, you know, quickly, the light blue line on the profile, is that going to be at the bottom, it's at the bottom of the drawing, is that going to be the actual profile of the finished pipe, siphon?
Okay, let's go a little slower with this.
See, I thought I needed to go slower on one end.
It's a combination plan.
Yeah.
Up in the charts, it shows some of the boreings that were done to try to find what the substrata was like, try to define some of that, those are some of the references there. In the plan view at the top of that sheet, it shows in the solid lines where the three barrels were proposed to be, to the south of the Mill Building, and then over to, there's a little square there that is our main pumping stations.
Yeah.
The existing siphons are the lighter colored ones, about a couple of hundred feet, well...
Downstream.
Two, 183 feet up to the north of the proposed siphons. That, the top part is done by our consultants. The bottom part is information that the subcontractor put together as a way to chart, or however they look at things. So it wasn't, this profile was not like this in our plan, and it was also switched too. So if you look at the plan view on the top of the page, you got the mills on the right and the Swayze Parkway on the left, down here in the profile, it's switched. The way that the subcontractor drew this, it's the mills are on the left of the profile, and the Parkway side is on the right. Now you specify, well, before I talk about the light blue, blue one, the green one is the location where the engineers wanted the siphon barrels to be in the profile view. The light blue that you're asking for is something that the subcontractor sketched, and we don't really know what that, the purpose of that was. There are, right above that light blue line though, are some little boxes and triangles and that sort of thing. That's where some of the drills have already happened.
Okay.
So you can see that it is substantially deeper than where the project profile was asking for the pipes to be.
That answers my question, thank you.
Select woman, Belinda.
Yes, hello, Paul. So I will save some of my questions for when you give us an update that I'm expecting from this memo in a few weeks, is that correct? There'll be another update?
This is a suggestion by the town manager that it would be in a couple of weeks. I would hope that we could gather enough information to make that a real decision-making time.
Okay, can you still hear me? Yes?
We can hear you, can you hear us?
Oh, well, no, I had a notice on my screen that said I'd been timed out, so I just wanted to make sure before I started talking some more. So when we get this update, I really appreciate knowing what the cost is to date. That would also include any expected bills that might not have come in yet, so we have a good understanding of where we're at financially with this project, and that will help make decisions. There was also, Paul, you mentioned a letter that was sent out before New Year's, and my sound went out a little bit, can you elaborate on that? I believe you said something about a letter that went out to the subcontractor?
Yes, there was a letter from Wright Pierce to the general contractor, and the letter says that yes, differing conditions were found than what was presented in the project plans and specifications. And with that letter, that was then allowing the contractor to mobilize to do this new option of obtaining a second drill for the purpose of rock drill and extra equipment, and then mobilizing so then after the new year that we could start with a new way of drilling because of the ledge situation.
Okay, so now I understand it better, thank you. So my understanding is the contractor received a letter that would allow the work to keep going just with a different attempt, a different way of trying to do it, correct?
It was our way of acknowledging that it was different conditions than what the contractor bid on.
Thank you for clarifying that. I'm all set right now, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Blassett?
This reminds me of drilling of the tunnel.
Paul, do you have any sort of a rough idea of how much over budget this could go at this point? And it's an unfair question to ask, but just trying to get a ballpark direction in my head.
Well, you asked the same questions we asked ourselves. You know, that's the bottom financial line, where's this taking us? And I got an idea of what it would be, and you know, if we start, and so it's a little bit longer answer here, I have to qualify some of this. You know, if we're saying that we're only making 50 feet a day, and it's a pretty expensive day, and we got to make it through the first time, then we got two more, a project estimate or a, you know, right now, shooting from the information that we can gather, we are probably looking to have, if one barrel is complete, and that's tied in, we'll probably be looking at doubling the cost of the project.
Okay.
Sorry, that's for one, one tunnel is doubling the, so...
That's why I was hesitating and having to explain it the way that I did.
I can appreciate that. So then if we think we have to replace two more, and we think best-case scenario, we've figured out how to get through this ledge, and it's going to be the same process for the other two tunnels, but we don't know.
That is what we will try to evaluate, whether we want to do the same project. That is what we will try to evaluate, whether we want to do the same process for the other two, or we're not complete with the first one yet too, so we've got to continue to see what happens.
Right, 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 right.
How often do you have project meetings, not just with the folks doing the work, but with town staff?
With town staff?
Yeah.
Probably every other week, we have a project meeting for that, and they coincide with the construction meeting too. And typically, we invite butters to some of our construction meetings too, but we haven't been the last couple of times because, you know, we're wrestling with numbers and, yeah.
Thank you for doing that.
Yeah.
So for those of us that were on the board back when, and I believe it was December 20, 2020, I think the board at that time, the reaction was we were a little aghast that, you know, the 11th hour, this was being brought to us when it had been known that there may have been a problem, and it was right around budget season and we were just finalizing the budget. And we talked through ways in which we could pay for this, and I recognize you inherited this, by the way. Fortunately, or unfortunately, due to a pandemic, there was congressional discretionary funding available, which the Public Works Department, in conjunction with the Assistant Town Manager, was able to get funding from Congressman Pappas that we were able to put to this and not have to go back to the voters. So the reason that it's, I think we're all concerned about this, is there's just been this ongoing issue of, you know, when problems come up, we don't always know about them right away. And I asked for this to be on the agenda this evening because I learned of the difficulty that was going on there by attending a Swayze Park trustee meeting, because the chair of the Swayze Park trustees, I think attends some of your meetings. So when Mr. Dean suggested maybe an update in a couple of weeks, I don't think that we need to have you come here to micromanage through us, but I think at the very least, if you're meeting every other week, that the town manager, as part of his report, can give us an update, because I'm just going to feel, I'm just going to express that I feel frustrated that once again, we're learning about problems, significant problems with this project, not in a timely manner. So that's not your job. You know, you came here and gave us a very thorough update and explained it in layman's terms, and I'm walking away understanding what the problem is and understanding what it's going to cost. But Mr. Dean, I think this needs to be part of your town manager's report as often as Mr. Velasquez's team meets, please.
Yes, sir.
I don't, I don't want any more surprises. And then we'll also have to start thinking about ways to pay for this.
Yeah, that's for sure.
Considering the budget is already on the warrant.
Yes, and we're looking at some different options.
Because twice the cost of this is not an insignificant amount of money, so I'm not quite sure what we're going to, times three, right? So are there any other questions or comments? Gentlemen, thank you for attending this evening, and Paul, thank you for everything that you put into this, and I appreciate the update. Thank you. At our last meeting, we talked about the Omni ballot perhaps being available for town election in March, the company called Democracy Live. And Mr. Dean, I believe you have an update for the board?
Yes, so we've had a group of staff working on the Omni ballot issue. It's been myself, the town clerk, and Pam McElroy, the senior executive assistant. And I put together a memo for the board's information to show where we're at with it. Again, just to recap, Omni ballot told the town they were only selling units in a total of 100 per purchase, but we worked with them and got them to offer a test unit for us for the March 2023 elections. And this was based on the fact that we had worked with them before in an attempt to implement their system in Exeter. Andy Kohler possesses headphones, a keyboard, and a printer from the One for All system used by the state. Andy was really instrumental in working with the state to get their permission to use the printer for our local election, so thank you to Andy for reaching out to the SOS on that. The printer was verified with Omni ballot, so it is functional.
Good.
And then working again with Omni ballot, they've agreed to provide a tablet to the town. That tablet's going to be sent lockdown with a test Exeter 2021 election ballot, and we'll test some printing from the Omni ballot tablet. And it's our hope that the system will be able to use, be used for the March 14, 2023 election. There was one other question about the school ballots, we're working on verifying those.
Okay.
But that's included as part of the package. So right now, it looks good, we should receive the tablet sometime this week.
Fantastic. So can we have an update on the 27th, because I know we've got some excited voters who are anxious to use this in March?
Absolutely.
Great.
And there was an overture that made about the select board trying the system when it's up and running, so, and make that invitation again.
Absolutely. I think Selectwoman Gilman, you and I used it at the November election, yeah. Great, so we'll look forward to an update, thank you and Andy for, this is important, thank you.
You're welcome.
Selectwoman Gilman, you have the floor.
Yeah, boy, do I. Actually, no, I don't. Yeah, I had wanted to put together a what's happening at the State House update for everyone and was kind of struggling with how to do it, so we have a little bit of a combination here. So Mr. Dean and I will figure out the better, better format, but what you're seeing first is from the NH, New Hampshire Municipal Association's newsletter, which nicely talks about the public hearings, or just by title of the bill. What I put together is what is on our calendar for this week, not just hearings that are coming up. So the first page of my memo has the consent calendar, and these are all the bills that are going to be on the floor on Tuesday tomorrow. And we vote for them as a large chunk. So it's two and a half pages of tiny writing, bills that we're going to be voting on in one large vote. Now, if there's a bill on there that somebody doesn't like, and they want to hear, like we had a bill sponsor didn't show up at our meeting to present the bill, so we had questions we couldn't get answered, so we put it on a consent calendar as, inexpedient to legislators, it shouldn't pass. And he objected because, you know, it was a good bill. So he has to get 10 other representatives to agree with him that this bill should come off consent, and then we hear it on the floor. So that happened, it's too late to do it with these ones, but, so that happens sometimes. These are, these are bills that go through the committees and usually come out with a vote of 20 to 0 or 19 to 1. So it's such a majority that there is a little feeling to explain it, other than go look on the website for what the bill says. So there's a little something for everybody in here. And again, it's just too many to go through them all. I think that judiciary, education, and criminal justice are the three biggest, and of course, municipal and county, are the biggest areas, committees to be watching right now because of the controversy of some of the bills they're dealing with, and who sits on the committees might matter to you. And then the second section is the regular calendar, and that is the actual individual bills that we're going to be voting on on Tuesday. And I put in the, in my take on it, just the full report of the body, because listing it as just the bill title doesn't cover what's happening. So these come in with, without recommendation, but each, each side makes a for and against argument. So I thought it'd be interesting for people to see where the, where the ideas come from that one, 10 people think it should pass and 10 people think it shouldn't. And they're pretty interesting. You also see on there some that are voted 20 to 0 and put on the regular calendar, and it's just because somebody wants to have it exposed to everyone, you know, on TV, look at this bill, it really means something, so that's always interesting too. And at the end is the upcoming sections for, or committee meetings for just this week. I don't think I went beyond this week. Maybe I did. So my committee's hearing, or doing an executive vote on 18 bills on Wednesday. There are a couple that do with housing and zoning, child tax credit, accessory dwelling units are allowed by rights, four units allowed by rights. This is overriding local authority on some zoning areas, which is not a favorite thing for people. But in, these bills are attempting to provide dwelling units. There's the housing crisis, everyone, it's coming out of every legislator's word in mouth. And right now, I think the data is that we have a 0, 0.05 vacancy rate, which means there literally is nowhere to live. And if we want to attract people, we have to have more units. So that's what the, all the housing bills are aimed at, is getting more units on the ground, and how do you go about doing that? There are two that have to deal with changes to the 79E tax deferment. One just changes the definition of qualifying structure to building and parcels of land. And the sponsor didn't really answer my question about why they had to change first, structure to building, and why the parcels of land. I can sort of see, if you've got an empty lot and you want to get a tax credit, you know, or tax relief from it. So there's not really a problem with that, except we would have to re-adopt it because of that change. Then there's further on, that's House Bill 177. And then further on is House Bill 236, no, 220. It's a 200 something, that's a similar thing, but it, oh, here it is, fire suppression systems, 265. HB 265 is another 79E where we could grant up to five years of tax relief for project putting in a fire suppression system or sprinkler system. Now, falling under 79E means that we have choices as the select board of how many years of tax relief. And there's also a limitation on how much tax relief, or how much of the project costs we're going to count. So it's not like we're going to give somebody, come in and say, $300,000 to do my, to sprinkle this new building or new redevelopment that I'm doing, give me relief for that total amount. It's limited at 75,000, I believe. So those ones, and it's funny, because Exeter has adopted the 79E policies, I'm the one, I'm the expert on my committee about it, so everybody's just, ask Julie about it, ask her, tell her, tell us how it works. Let's see, there is one for a child tax credit. It would allow for a family to get a tax credit, like a veteran's credit, for each child, each child that they have. But there is no description of a means testing kind of thing, is it K through 12? Do you have to show their report card, you know, something to prove the kid still lives at home? And then there's another one to make an education grants, child, for children. And again, it didn't have any criteria for that. And also, on both of those questions, neither of the sponsors could answer how these would affect using the education freedom accounts, and could you get both? There's some simple ones, Deputy Animal Control Officer was surprisingly controversial, and it is really just giving the authority for the sheriff's department to be the first call when there is a large animal abuse thing that happens, like the Great Danes and the horses and, but for some reason, it was, it was, people didn't like it, they said, you know, your town should know when there's something bad happening, not always. Okay. Couple of other tax things about changing dates on when we set the tax rate and/or when elderly exemptions are figured, they're trying to bring the dates up together to be easier for the tax assessors to figure out, and for the general public to not have to deal with things in November when looking at April. Judiciary is doing all about reproductive rights, starting at nine on Wednesday in the State Hall. Finance is busy, the governor is giving, presenting his budget to the House in, joint session of the House and Senate on Tuesday, that's in the middle of the day at 1 o'clock, I believe. Education has a lot of things that people should be paying attention to, and it's about how we spend the money, how we spend the education freedom accounts, how we manage them, adopting budgets for school administrative units. We have one of those on our, on our calendar too, and it's, they're, these things are popping up in different places that used to come in as a second, like we'd have a shot at it too, because it affects the tax rate in our town. And they're not doing that. So there's some bills that show up in commerce that I think should have passed through our committee or should, but I am not the leader. So I, you know, I gave all of this information to you, it's all on the website, in the town website with the packet, packet, packet for this meeting.
Thank you for that.
I urge everyone to take a look at our packet and this extra one. And it's, it's never too late to email all of your state, actually, the whole house if you want, which would be best for even tomorrow, if you want to get right on it tonight and do it. For any of the hearings, you can still do the electronic submission for your testimony until midnight the day before the public hearing is. Once the public hearing's done, your only option is email. So all the bills that I'm dealing with on Wednesday, you just have to send me an email about it, or send my committee, my whole committee, preferably, an email. Sometimes we have, I've gotten a couple of letters from towns that the select board takes votes on to support or recommend or oppose a bill. So I'd really be interested in if any of you are, feel like doing that, if there's, I mean, there's some that I really strongly believe in, but there are other ones that you might want, want me to push harder on.
Certainly.
So I've gotten letters from our select board, voted, you know, we are against this bill. And so I'm looking to you to pick those out, because some of them, I have to say, I might be a little maybe partisan about, but I don't want to be.
No.
Okay, I think.
We've written to Concord before, once or twice.
Yep.
So excellent idea.
Yep, it's been really rushed, the speaker has given us a very short amount of time to do these bills, and so it's hard to communicate all of it, because it's, like every week, I've been there for two days from nine to six, I guess.
Yeah.
So, and then I'm tired, and I have a district commission meeting, so, you know, something like that happens. So please, you know, take a look, let me know. And so this will get out sooner than our next meeting.
Okay.
Because we're meeting in two weeks, right, not one?
Two weeks, 27.
Yeah, so I can put out an interim one for what's happening.
I think that's great, and if there's anything that we want her to, we can take that up.
That sounds good.
Thank you.
Like I said, criminal justice, judiciary, education, municipal and county, those are the ones making the most noise right now.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, jumping into regular business, we have quite a few credits and exemptions and recognizing that all of these have to be done roll call. I think there are some that we can group into one motion.
Yes, Mr. Chair, let me just.
We.
Just scroll through, I have to, I have to enlarge the type. Yes, with the indulgence of the board, we have three veterans credits, they're all in the amount of $500, can I offer the same texture?
Please.
I move to approve a veteran's credit for. I move to approve a veterans' credit for map 72, lot 58, map 87, lot 3, unit 65, map 72, lot 2, unit 20, unit 3, each $500 for the tax year 2023.
I'll second. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, next we have disability exemptions, and we have four for approval. I'd like to put them together, all in the same amount of money.
Please.
I move to approve a disability exemption for map 65, lot 124, unit 35, map 95, lot 64, unit 188, map 95, lot 64, unit 80, map 95, lot 64, unit 342, in the amount of $125,000 each for the tax year 2023.
Second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes.
All right, and then I move to deny a disability exemption for map 104, lot 79, unit 1012, for the tax year 2023.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay. All right, I'm going to do these in a bunch of groups as they, as they scroll up my screen and not get confused. We have several elderly exemptions, and-
Can I ask you to pause one second?
Yes.
If you're not looking at the sheet, if you scroll down, there are more in that amount, you could do-
I know, I just-
If that's too confusing, though, we can go in order.
No, just keep me on track for which ones I don't, okay. So I would like to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $236,251 for the tax year 2023, for the following map, lot and unit numbers. Map 63, lot 163, map 72, lot 117, unit 9, map 73, lot 233, map 80, lot 6, unit 41, map 104, lot 79, unit 516, map 87, lot 14, unit 20A, map 73, lot 136, map 28, lot 5, map 104, lot 79-
No.
Sorry, thank you.
65.
Right, 104. Which one was that, 104?
Right below the one you were reading.
65, lot 56.
Yeah. Map 65, lot 56. Map 63, lot 120. Map 32, lot 12, unit 2022.
Just two, just 22.
Oh, sorry, I'm used to the year. Map 32, lot 12, unit 22.
104.
Map 104, lot 79, unit 134, map 80, lot 7, unit 2, map 104, lot 79, unit 219, map 68, lot 6, unit 421, map 104, lot 79, unit 132A.
And that's it?
Yep.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you.
Okay, I move to approve elderly exemptions in the amount of $183,751 for the tax year 2023, for the following properties, each. Okay, one. Map 104, lot 79, unit 954. Map 95, lot 64, unit 148. Map 104, lot 79, unit 616. And map 104, lot 79, unit 208.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes.
Okay. I move to approve elderly exemptions for, in the following amount of $152,251 each for tax year 2023, for the following properties. Map 95, lot 64, unit 297, map 95, lot 64, unit 349, map 68, lot 6, unit 825, and map 87, lot 8, unit B11.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you very much. That was all of them.
Yes.
We also have a memo in our packet from the Finance Director, Corey Stevens, in light of the recent settlement agreement between the Riverwoods Company and the Town of Exeter. He is requesting consideration be given that the interest and fees are waived. Specifically, the amount is $1,187, no, $1,187.67 that is accrued from January 1, 2023, and the date the property taxes were paid. Are there any questions or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I would entertain a motion, I would entertain a motion to waive the interest on late property tax payments for map 97, lot 23, map 80, lot 18, map 98, lot 37, in the amount of $1,187.67.
So moved.
Thank you. Motion second, any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk.
Selectwoman Belanger.
I'm going to recuse.
Ah, yes, thank you. Selectwoman Rantriolov.
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan.
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. Motion passes, 4-0.
4-0, one.
And one abstention. Mr. Dean.
So we have a few things to report tonight. One is on the HelpSee situation. We have a bin now over at the transfer station.
Great.
Just wanted to acknowledge Jay Perkins and Tricia Allen, who did a great job coordinating with Jordan from HelpSee.
Terrific.
I did reach out to Superintendent Ryan, and they are working on getting two bins over at the SAU 16 property as well.
Wonderful.
So that should be done pretty, pretty soon.
Terrific, thank you.
149 Kingston Road. At the Housing Advisory Committee meeting last Friday, we had a conversation about 149 Kingston Road. As you know, the town owns the property, and we're actually looking at the, working with the Housing Authority to maybe do something with that.
Okay.
So that's ready for, more ready for primetime, we'll bring it back to the Board at that point.
Thank you.
The Athenians, our town clerk, Andy Kohler, I wanted to read something for, for Andy. She was a recipient. Andy Kohler, Town of Exeter, New Hampshire, has fulfilled all of the requirements to become an Athenian Fellow of the IIIMC Athenian Leadership Society. The Athenians were leaders who invented the idea of political democracy, philosophy, logic and rhetoric. They left the world enriched with their ideas. The choice of Athenian and the title of the Leadership Society signals the value of this culture from 2,500 years ago. To be an Athenian Fellow is to hold knowledge and the quest for knowledge in high esteem. Municipal clerks at their best exemplify Athenian values. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Andy.
I have a finance and personnel meeting later this week at Health Trust, and I also wanted to acknowledge the work of the Fire Department, who responded to 16 water emergencies when we had the cold weather. They did a great job, and they had 61 calls over the three-day period, so they really were active during that time. So, thank you, Chief Wilken.
You're very welcome. Thank you, Chief.
And we did get the SCBA's in today.
Okay.
So they're here.
That's why you're here.
At last.
Good 10 months. Who's counting?
Mr. Dean, did we have any property damage? Town property?
So we had a sewer pipe burst at the library, and we're in the process of still going through the insurance process with that.
Okay.
So I'll report back to the Board when I know more.
Okay. If we only had one property loss, that's not bad, considering what other municipalities faced.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Is that it?
That's it.
Okay, all right. Select Board Committee reports, Selectwoman Rantriolov? Nope. Selectwoman Cowan?
I imagine we're going to go over the all boards meeting, so that's my only thing.
Selectwoman Gilman?
Same.
Nothing, okay. Selectwoman Belanger?
Okay, so, all boards meeting, as I said, we'll go through that, but I would like to add that, or say that I loved that meeting very inspired with the interaction, and I'm looking forward to scheduling a second one in the near future. Planning Board, February 9. Our town planner went through an extensive approach process on ways the planning department can move forward over the next year on the zoning proposal. It was a review outline for our community. This is going to be a wonderful opportunity for anyone interested in learning or understanding more about zoning and how it works. This coming year looks to be a fascinating, deeper look into the important role zoning plays in our community. We're also going to go over the proposed changes, section by section, and Exeter TV will be playing a role in getting out specific information to the public. And everyone on the planning board expressed excitement over this process for the upcoming year. Housing Advisory Committee was Friday, February 10. Tony Texter and Margaret Dooling were invited to talk to us from our Housing Advisory, excuse me, Housing Authority. They went over the history, our current stock for public housing and rental assistance, a voucher program, the waitlist, length of time on that list, their current funding, and their current needs, and also a five-year goals plan. And just for some background, Exeter Housing Authority is one of 17 housing authorities in New Hampshire. We currently have 280 households receiving housing assistance through Exeter Housing Authority. Exeter owns and manages 107 public housing units, and also manages 173 rental assistance vouchers. The waitlist for public housing is currently at 295, with a three-to-five-year waitlist, depending on income level, residence or employment. The waitlist for the voucher program is 306, with a one-to-six-year waitlist, depending on income level, residency and employment. Exeter Housing Authority has four properties. Squams View, which is 277 Water Street, Linden Fields, Portsmouth Ave and Auburn Street. These total 170, 107 units, out of which there are 81 one-bedroom, 11 two-bedroom, 9 three-bedroom and 4 four-bedroom. Their funding is through Housing, excuse me, Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is HUD. And one of the things that a few of us learned at this meeting, we'd been hearing a lot about Meeting Place, and Meeting Place is not part of the Housing Authority, but they have assisted greatly in working with our Housing Authority to offer, to accept vouchers. So that is something that we need more of, but also, we learned that we have a few key companies or people who own rental units that have been working with our Housing Authority that have helped them to use their funding almost 99%. So yes, we still have a huge waitlist, and a long waitlist, but our community is working to, working with Housing Authority to try to accomplish their goals. And we have invited them to come to a select board meeting in the future. They're working, as the town manager mentioned, they're working on a few suggestions that came out of that meeting, and so, once we have an update on that, we'll see about them coming to talk to the entire Board for any questions people might have. And then the HelpSee update, which is exciting. Thank you so much, Russ and everyone, Jay Perkins and everyone else who's been working on that. That was a pretty good process for two weeks from our previous meeting, so, thank you.
Thank you, Selectwoman Belanger. There was a Sustainability Advisory Committee meeting the following day after our last select board meeting, and we had a guest speaker, Selectwoman Gilman, joined us to talk about some of the activity at the House regarding single-use plastics. Speaking of single-use plastics, the committee commenced their meeting by talking about deliberate obsession and the citizens petition with the ordinance. They welcomed Ryan Jean, newly appointed member of the committee. They discussed preliminarily some ways that their initiatives that they want to start regarding climate change and climate action, and working within the master plan, and working within other committees and boards, and coming back to the select board with future initiatives for climate change. And lastly, their subcommittee is still working on their revised emissions statement and charge that they'd like to present to the select board in the near future. And that's the only committee activity. I had the River Advisory Committee, again, is postponed until March, the recommendation of Mr. Velasic. And lastly, we all spoke about the all-board meeting, all-board, all-committee meeting we had February 8 at the library. And I'd like to thank all of the town staff and all of the volunteers from various committees and boards that attended. I thought it was fairly well-attended. And as Selectwoman Belanger said, it was uplifting and exciting. There were a lot of ideas that were bantered back and forth between staff and different committees and boards, and I think that we identified two areas of communication, the first of which is between internally, between department, staff and committees, and committees and boards with each other, and then the other was, how can we better communicate to the folks out in the public? There were a lot of interesting ideas. I think there are some that we all agreed that we would continue to pursue. I'll speak only for myself, but I received three emails from committee members that attended with some follow-up ideas, so I think, I think folks are excited to work on this. And we agreed that sometime in the fall would be the next time that we would, we would meet and convene. There are minutes in our packet if folks want to read what we talked about. Mr. Dean, do we need to vote to adopt those, or are those just there for the packet?
They're just there for the packet.
Okay. And let other members of the Board speak on their feelings, but first, I'd like to just extend an apology to the ZBA, who apparently did not receive the email, so, spoke with the Vice Chair, and again, apology, there was no slight intended, but we'll make sure that we rectify that next time. So, with that, any other thoughts? Selectwoman Belanger?
Other than, I just want to thank Joanna for coming to take minutes for us to, and Exeter TV for filming that. I think it's important for our community to hear what was discussed and try to find better ways of doing things.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to correspondence, we had Legislative Bulletin from the NHMA, the minutes that I just referenced from the all-boards meeting. Mr. Dean, I'm going to ask you to help me out, because some of my packet got cut off. So if you could speak briefly to the business outreach and also Parks and Rec, that was the one that got cut off, and I didn't get the ending of what Mr. Beeson was saying, so if you could briefly touch upon that?
Sure. So this is, the business outreach is something that Selectwoman Belanger had mentioned at one of the prior meetings, that this is sent out by Mr. Winham, and so this is just a copy of what he sent out.
That we can't read.
Yeah. Which, mine is, looks like this, I don't know.
Mine's even worse.
Yeah. Is it, okay, well, we'll take another shot at that.
All right, and then the Parks and Rec thing got cut off, it was-
That's a summer camp scholarship fund information. And then in Exeter, it's called the Exeter Vibe Summer Music Series sponsorship, and talks about just some different partnerships that are being proposed for the concerts in the summer.
Okay. Can we get another copy? Because on the summer camp scholarship, he starts with, unfortunately- Because on the Summer Camp Scholarship, he starts with unfortunately, and then he starts with a new, I don't know what unfortunate, I don't know what unfortunately was pertaining to.
Yeah. It says, unfortunately, our larger programs such as Summer Camp, where every registration goes toward the camp expenses.
No, no, no. Down bottom, down at the bottom. Unfortunately not.
Ah.
And then, I don't know what was-
Fair enough. Yeah. We'll get, we'll get that.
I was curious and interested.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. We'll get that out to you tomorrow.
Thank you. And we had correspondence from Attorney Summers again, and I think we've-
Solved that.
Solved that this evening with the two appointments. We have a notice from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services on a public hearing for a large groundwater withdrawal permit. Mr. Dean, any action the town has to take on this?
No, no action. Just notice.
All right. And that's it for correspondence. Reviewing the Board calendar, we meet again on February 27th and a week later, March 6th, because of the election the following week on March 14th. So with that, any other comments or? And Selectwoman Belanger, I hope you feel better.
Thank you. Sorry I couldn't be there. Sorry, Julie.
No problem.
Thank you for being able to join us this evening.
Yeah.
And thank you to Chief Wilking for keeping us company. Always count on the news to the public. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. Okay. Selectwoman Belanger?
Aye.
Selectwoman Rantriolov?
Aye.
Selectwoman Cowan?
Aye.
Clerk says aye, Mr. Chair.
Aye. We're adjourned. Thank you. Good night, everybody.
Thank you for tuning in to Exeter TV. Exeter TV is the town's public and government access channels, available on Comcast Channels 98 and 22. Channel 98 is your channel. If you have an idea for a program, want to host your own talk show or submit a film, we're here to get your content on television. On Channel 22, we bring you live and replay coverage of government meetings and other town updates. A third channel, Blue Hawk Media, is operated by SAU 16 and can be found on Channel 13 with all your school sports, events and meetings. You can watch Exeter TV online at exeternh.tv, Apple TV and on Roku. Find us on social media for extra content. Subscribe to our YouTube channel and hit the bell to get notified about live streams and new content. Tune into our platforms every other Friday to watch the Exeter Biweekly Report with recaps of recent events, updates from town departments and messages from nonprofits in your area. If you head to our website, exeternh.tv, we invite you to sign up to our newsletter to receive monthly updates about new content, upcoming meetings and more. We'd like to thank you for taking the time to watch Exeter TV and hope that you tune into our other content as well.